Fleet facilities, he's been on vacation.
No one to crack the whip?
Yeah.
So, Mike, did you tell me that Karen wasn't going to be here this evening? Oh, okay, it seemed like I heard that last time or something.
Nate or, Nate or, she may have, I think she may have told, okay, she may have told me.
It seemed like you may have told me or something.
Yeah. Now that.
Hey boss, how you doing? I apologize, I smell flame broiled, I'm in front of a barbecue for like an hour.
That's good for you.
Savannah's having a party and she asked me to cook up a bunch of stuff, I apologize if I.
Okay. We'd like to welcome you to our planning commission meeting this evening, this is planning commission meeting for July eleventh, twenty twenty-three. This meeting is being recorded, we're gonna begin our meeting this evening with an opening prayer from Commissioner Marchbanks and a pledge of allegiance from Commissioner Callis.
Our Father in heaven, we come before thee this evening and give thee thanks for many blessings, we thank thee for the blessings we have, a land and a free country and for the opportunities we have and we thank thee for this city and the people that we serve and pray that we will be able to carry forth the planning commission business this evening in a manner that would be beneficial to all, again, we thank thee and say these things humbly in Jesus' name, amen.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll begin our meeting this evening with a roll call of commissioners, Sharon Call here, Mike Marchbanks.
Here.
Jared showers.
Here.
Rob Callis.
Here.
Stephen Johnson.
Here.
Scott Thompson.
Here.
And Karen Danielson is absent this evening. Okay, and item number two on our agenda, this is approval of the minutes, these are minutes from June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. And corrections.
Good.
Okay.
Good for my recollection.
The only thing I had in it's, it's a really tiny thing, but there's a couple of places where it has my name, Commissioner Call and it, and I realize that's probably because how my name is, but it has it in lowercase. And I thought maybe it, or it's a name, otherwise I wouldn't worry about it. It's on page five, line four, on page nine, line five. And like I said, I wouldn't, that, I wouldn't worry about it at all, except it's a name. Okay, item number three on our agenda, this is a time for.
Did you approve the minutes?
Oh, excuse me, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, um.
A second.
Okay, okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the voting is unanimous. Sorry about that. The third, the item number three on our agenda, this is a time for a public comment. Um, this would be for items not on the agenda and since we don't have public here this evening.
Maybe Mike has comments. You have a public comment?
Okay, the next item on our agenda is an ordinance amendment for public king, public noticing and because that's an ordinance amendment, we do need to, to open a public hearing.
I make a motion to open a public hearing.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the voting is unanimous. Okay, this is item number four and our applicant is Linden City and our presenting staff is Mary Barnes.
Thank you, Commissioner Call, so during the twenty twenty-three legislative session, the Utah State Legislature passed Senate Bill forty-three, which put in place uniform public noticing standards for the state of Utah, did things like separate notices into different classes, it standardized the information that municipalities, counties and then the state has to put in notices and it determined exactly when public notices need to be sent out, et cetera. Some of these standards are already met by city code and some of them, city staff will just keep track of as we go along as state code changes. Um, this new law, Senate Bill forty-three, also required certain land use applications to notice an affected area, uh, this new term affected area and that's defined in the state code as the area that is designated in statute, county ordinance or municipal ordinance as the area for which public notice must be provided. And then down at point D, it says, in relation to a municipal ordinance, which would apply to us, if no affected area is designated in the municipal ordinance, the affected area is the municipality.
I can add one thing, so that letter B right there, there's a couple cities that got caught by this, so Heber City was one example. They didn't have, like our city says, a parameter of five hundred feet, eight hundred feet for noticing. So Heber City got caught with this and they didn't have anybody, any parameters like that, so they were spending five thousand dollars to notice everybody in the whole city of a, of a land use application.
Yeah, when I read that one, I thought that would be the outcome if you didn't have to do that.
Yeah.
They just overlooked that.
Well, the legislature kind of overlooked this, they're gonna rewrite this section next year, they, they realized they made a couple mistakes on this, but cities are, need updated anyways right now until next year.
You might see it again, anyways, so our current code already says, like Mike said, we already have parameters, if it's a residential project, then we notice everyone within five hundred feet of that property and if it's non-residential, everyone within eight hundred feet. So, um, to avoid having to notice the entirety of Linden City, like Mike was saying, um, we have to find the affected area as follows. So affected area shall mean all parcels of real property which have at least one boundary line that lies within five hundred feet of at least one boundary line of a property that is a subject of a land use decision by Linden City if the subject is within a residential or commercial farm zone or within eight hundred feet of a subject property that is within a non-residential zone. So that essentially just takes our existing parameters, puts it into this neat little definition, we don't have to spend five thousand dollars. Anyways, um, yeah, essentially this is, this ordinance amendment is to help satisfy state requirements, make noticing much easier for us over the next little while. And our current standards, they are going to stay the same with this ordinance amendment, there's no, well, there, there is a change, but it's a fairly minor change, just adding that definition, any questions from you, Mike, on that?
So the only thing we have to do is just add this affected area definition?
Yeah, that's, that's the only thing that's in that draft ordinance amendment.
There were a couple little minor things that Brian added, Brian, Brian wrote this and he apologized that he couldn't be here this evening and so, but yeah, he, he made a couple minor corrections, adding some state law references there at the beginning.
And then down here where it used to talk about those parameters, it, they changed it to, um, he changed it to um, be mailed an address to the record owner of each parcel within an affected area. So he's basically just put the parameters up into the definition.
He just labeled it, is all we did.
Essentially, yep.
Um, since we don't have public here, um, let's go ahead and close the public hearing and then we'll discuss it, okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the voting is unanimous. So I guess we did, we just need to discuss this, if there's any.
Other questions?
Any questions or?
Question here, if you're an absentee owner, it's a rental property or you own the commercial building or whatever, is it going to the mailing address from the county records, that's where you're pulling this, right? So it's not necessarily going to the, the hadre, the address, it's going to the mailing address of the owner, right?
Tax, tax notice, tax address.
And it's definitely not duplicating that, like where it's going to both or anything like that, I don't, I mean, tenants generally wouldn't have a stake in what happens, but I just was wondering if it.
Is the city's protocol to just follow the, the state guidelines and the ordinance guidelines or do we, do we?
State doesn't call out like a parameter, they just leave that up to the city. So, you know, years ago, we set up the five hundred and eight hundred, we also have a provision in there that says the city can, if we feel like not enough people are getting noticed, like let's say it's a farm parcel and five hundred feet doesn't really notify, we can extend that if we feel like that it's necessary.
Is our protocol for the city to be more lenient or more, uh, notify more people than less people?
I think, I think we do notify more people, when I was at South Salt Lake, we notified everybody within three hundred feet.
You always hear people come and say, I never knew about this.
I know we've expanded some notices on a few issues that we've dealt with, it seems like you guys have expanded the notice radius or whatever. Can't recall which issues they were, but I remember that coming up in some meetings.
We know, and we know you do notify them and they just probably don't see them, but.
And the best thing, and maybe we ought to do an article in the newspaper sometime, I mean, in the newsletter, but the best thing they can do is look at the city website or the state website, so whenever we have a public notice that comes out, we have to notify the city website, post it on the city website, post it on the state website and we post it in all the buildings and, and so, but the state website is a really good resource, it keeps track of all past notices as well, we upload staff reports to that, it's, it's a really good, all, all the cities do it.
Yeah.
And just search under your city.
Yep.
That's mostly the like legislative ones, not so much the like.
Kathy usually does quite a few.
Does it all of them, like even the commissioners permits and everything?
Initially, she puts like staff reports on there and stuff.
That's true.
And the agendas.
Uh huh.
So at a minimum, the agenda and staff reports on there.
And the agenda will always be posted in all city buildings as well.
I would hope that we're lenient, in other words, let's say that the five hundred comes within fifty feet of the.
Of another people.
Maybe then we notify them too.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we don't, sometimes we don't, we don't look at that.
Yeah.
Really that close, whether it's on a property line or something, we'll, we'll maybe look at, we'll maybe go to the block or some, you know, the end of the block or something like that.
Good.
Okay, any other questions? I don't have any, are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, do you want to make a motion, Mike?
Yeah, I move to recommend approval of ordinance amendment twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash O as presented.
Do you have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, the voting is unanimous. And so I guess we're on to, any reports or information from planning commissioners? Anyone have anything they'd like to bring up?
I just, um, today I listened to the June nineteenth city council meeting in regard to Wadley Farms, so if you didn't know all that, everything we recommended planned, it did seem there, there was a little bit of concern over the road not going through or waiting too long to make the road go through, but overall, it went the way we, we originally approved it.
I listened to the one from July third, uh, most of it and one of the things, and Mike's gonna cover several of those things, but one of the things that I thought was interesting is that um, there was a guy there from the Utah Government Trust, they're the insurance carrier for the pool.
Oh, yeah.
And apparently they have like thirty-five members and, um, and they do, you know, compare your pool to the national standard and to, they do a comprehensive risk assignment of like water quality, the mechanics of the pool, management, bike guards training. And our, our pool, um, got a big plaque and they were number two. And someone said, well, and, and they said, we have one of the best aquatic center in the state. Um, we're the only facility with a flow rider that they insure. So we have the highest amount of risk and the largest aquatic center and more attractions. Um, and someone at Carolyn said, well, who's number one? And they said, well, um, an aquatic center out in Vernal, but I think that's a special needs type aquatic center and it, it's open year round, so they were saying, so you only have three months to have everything in place and, and like you have it, so that's quite an honor for our aquatic center.
Yeah, in fact, I was there, um, my, on one of the busy fourth day weekend days, I think it was the fifth or something like that. And the park, and the pool was quite full, I notice every single hour, they make everybody get out of the pool.
Oh, they do.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what they, what they're doing, but they make everybody get out of the pool, test water. You know, I think, give everybody a chance to go to the bathroom. And then, and then go, and go, go back in, so every, on the hour, you was, so you, you only get about forty-five minutes of use out of that hour.
I was there on the fourth and.
Yeah, it was on the fifth.
I appreciate the pool, I, I come down with grandkids, I come down early in the morning and swim, I, I use it a lot.
Yeah, my wife started coming down, she was down this morning.
Oh, was she?
Walking backward laps or something.
Oh, yeah, I didn't notice her. Um, anyway, thought I'd mention that and then all of you saw the notice for the summer party?
Mm-hmm. For the what?
See that, the summer party for Linden employ, Linden City employees.
Oh, I didn't see that.
That, it was, came to your email, I think it just came last night.
Oh.
Um, it's on June twenty-first at six thirty.
July.
I mean, July, twenty-first at six thirty.
I didn't see it, I didn't see it. Yeah, I didn't, I did not see it.
The only thing I didn't notice on there was whether we're supposed to RSVP to someone.
Oh, it just popped up, Mike Brower, pool party.
Yeah, so anyway.
Where'd it come from?
Mike Brower, Mike Brower.
He said.
What, trust me, I wasn't there at the beginning of the meeting, because I looked.
Well, I saw it yesterday or whatever.
I did too.
It just showed up.
Okay, and then I, and if anyone else has anything?
I have something, if I may bring it up, just an FYI that maybe you can pass on, Michael. Um, on Main Street, you know, a couple of years ago, one of our neighbors there had some concern because his people turned off the Fourth North to go on to Main Street. And extra wide and some people were driving in the shoulder instead of in the lane and so they petitioned the city to put in some speed bumps, some, uh, plastic speed bumps and they did. And those people have since moved now, but I have witnessed three accidents this summer caused by those speed bumps and I just wanted to notify that we might have some exposure there.
How so, Rob?
Uh, kids riding on bikes and, and the, the speed bumps are kind of on an angle and
Yeah.
They're real steep, you know, they're just these little ones, they hit them and boom, they go over, one, one child was on a scooter and he really got hurt, I had to help him out and take him home, so just wondering if it's worth it.
Well, I know, um, it's been my experience with speed bumps, all, people always want to traffic coming measures, that's the first thing they always want of a speed bumps.
Yeah.
And they want it and they put it right in front of their house, people get it, because you put it right in front of their house, within a month, they're calling you saying, could you please rip those things out?
And they weren't made for.
So, and then they have to sit there and listen to the car springs.
Six of them and they're, you know, like a hundred yards apart and they're at an angle and so they're not really to slow down the speed there to say, hey, get over, I think it could be done with striping almost rather than a speed bump, but I just wanted to make you aware.
Those are on Main Street at four hundred north?
From four hundred north to just about the arena.
Okay.
And in the evenings, as you go down the arena and down the hill, you can't see that one. And that's what's happened to these two, these kids.
Speed bumps, I think they're probably water diversion or something, I don't know, but they were put in there for speed bump purposes, but they're not a traditional speed bump.
Oh, no, they're not at all. Were they, they were bike wrecks or were they vehicle wrecks too?
Bicycle.
Just bicycle, okay.
Those are, so we watch them on my segue too, because.
Because they're an Segway.
I got three of them.
Or you can hit them, the edge of it, head on almost. And then the only other thing I was gonna say is probably ought to express our condolences to Don Peterson's family. I, I read about his passing.
Quinn Peterson, Dr. Peterson's son.
Big funeral, twenty-one gun salute, they had horse carriage, that horse carriage brought him in.
How many years did he work?
A lot of years.
How many? Thirty-four years, just city.
He wasn't very ill, you know.
I didn't know, but I, I ride with.
Yeah, he was, uh, Public Works Director.
Yeah. Yeah, big, big, big funeral. Yeah, how did you know? I didn't. I next live next door to the cemetery.
Yeah, that's why I wondered.
That's all I had. I always questioned who it is, you know.
Okay, anyone else?
Um, I don't want to keep us any longer, but Mike, you sent out an email about affordable housing, uh, some metrics and a report and I opened it up and I, when I see that much data on one paper, I just kinda, but was there anything interesting there just to take a minute or two and point out to us and pick that apart because?
Yeah, well, I mean. Yeah, one of the things that's too much on one piece of paper for my brain. We didn't use A and A was the number one thing that they do all across the board. That was to like increase density, uh.
Rezone for densities, yeah. And I don't have that up right now, let me, if I can pull it up, that will be yours, right, Mary?
What'd you say?
But E, which we adopted is the highest.
Yeah, but if I hit that email thing, it'll be yours.
Which is the, um.
I didn't even know how to read that.
Create or allow for reduced regulations regarding internal gen, this is just saying county and city. How many cities?
I don't know if I can get into.
Eighty-two cities, counties.
I'm not, not on the internet.
As one of their, one of their.
And E is what, accessory apartment?
Now, E is create or allow for a, and reduce regulations related to internal or detached accessory dwellings in residential zones. So that was one of the most, I just looked one, but A was the most common, one of, one of the second most common. But that was reduced densities.
Sorry, give me one second, I'm just pulling up that link.
Wasn't reduced densities, wasn't it increased?
Rezone for density, to facilitate, yeah, production of moderate income housing, and the thing that's really interesting about moderate income housing, we can do all of these things and there's no one ever gonna build a moderate income house in London. You know, based on the moderate income's like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Did I hear you say that, uh, they stopped construction over by Linden Nursery?
Well, what they did was when we went through the open house and he had, he has two of the buildings completed, um, I don't know, four or six complexes. And they were just talking about the difficulty and, and people being able to get financing. And he said, well, they were gonna not go ahead with any more buildings until.
Till the market turned.
Yeah, until the market turned and they were talking about down at Anderson Farms that they bought up a bunch of bank homes so they could finance them themselves and Jeff just said, I don't have to do that, I can just wait. So, I don't know if you've heard any different than that, Mike, but he just said he was just, he's gonna go ahead with those two buildings and then wait and see.
And they even have a third.
What the market was.
They have a third building, the slabs poured and plumbing's in and they just left that fellow as well.
So this is that dashboard, um, that we sent out, so you, it just kinda gives a overall view that, you know, all ninety-five cities that were required to report, ninety-five cities and counties that were, were required to report have reported. The most popular strategy is letter E, which is create or allow for and reduce regulations related to internal or detached accessory dwelling units, um, in residential zones. So Linden's had an accessory apartment ordinance for twenty-five years, um, that was kind of a give me, gimme strategy for all of the cities, you know, so for us, it was easy, we'd already been doing it, this required other cities who didn't, um, have that strategy in their city, they had to adopt it. And so you can see the, the strategies we, we are, um, that we set were letters E, J, L, P and R. Those were our, our five strategies. Uh, you can, uh, I mean, see which was the most popular, again, that was letter E, uh, the next one was F, which is zone or rezone for higher densities, um, you know, the ne- next one was, what's that? A, rezone for density, densities necessary to facilitate production of moderate income housing. And so you, it is just kinda gives you a summary of what other cities are doing or, or where we stand compared to, you know, in relation to other communities.
Yeah, it, it seems like so many of the cities are rezoning for higher density housing, but it, so many of the, that housing that is going into those higher densities really isn't moderate income housing.
No.
It's, it's quite expensive housing.
Well, like, like, like.
Like yours.
Like we're saying, like we're saying down here across the street at, um, at the Linden Nursery, those, I think he's, he, the ones they had already sold were like in the high, mid-high fours.
Well, they were high, they were high fours and at the five.
And five hundred, yeah, five hundred.
Yeah, so that's not moderate, moderate income around here is three fifty or something like that, based on the county.
Things like we're doing with the accessory apartments, so our, our strategies are, you know, having internal and detached accessory apartments. We've waived all impact fees for accessory apartments since, um, in the last two years, a little over two years, um, we've approved forty-two new accessory apartments. Uh, typically, we approve about seven per year, but the last two years, we've really seen, um, a big increase in those. We've approved twenty-one just since last August. Um, we, the city council last week waived, waived police and fire impact fees for moderate income housing units and so if someone comes in with a moderate income housing development, they'll waive the police and fire impact fees for those, so those are our three that we've, we've met so far. Um, our other two that we still need to meet is, um, uh, the, the two RDA areas we have, so where the Kia dealership and seven hundred north, those two areas, we have to set aside uh, between five and ten percent of the property tax increment that we receive off that. We have to set that aside to help with mot, with affordable housing and so we still need to come up with a plan to use that, how we're going to use that money. And then the other one, um, is zoning incentives for moderate income housing units. And so we're looking, um, to have a discussion with the council about, you know, do we reduce maybe some parking requirements? You know, or there's some other, you know, things like that that we, in zoning incentives, um, that we, that we need to reduce or increase or something like that to incentivize moderate income housing.
If, if we were to, uh, I'm just thinking if this would qualify under that. If we were to, um, say do four lots per acre housing, you know, would that qualify for that?
I don't think so.
Well, the fact that we don't offer hardly any, any, in, only in the west side of Geneva, it probably would qualify.
That's what I'm wondering.
So, yeah, I mean, there's some type of zoning incentive, so a smaller lot, yeah, that, that would be an incentive.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
It'd be an incentive, but I don't know that you'd reach that moderate income, I could, now you're still talking quarter acre lots.
The state's argument is, is, I mean, a half acre lot now in Linden's going for six hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
If you've got a quarter acre lot, that, that reduces surprise.
You're gonna save a few hundred thousand dollars if you had, you know, a, a normal, which most cities are quarter acre and, and less, but, you know.
Well, now.
I can't believe the values are holding the way they are.
Yeah, but, I mean, I know it's a planned community, like what, um, that, what it's Songberg, Corbridge is you're doing. But the homes that are the transition from the, you know, from the other homes, they, they aren't on half acre lots, they're on smaller, smaller building lots. Does that? But, but they are on smaller building lots.
Yeah, that, that doesn't, those, those were done prior to this plan.
Oh, okay, okay, that's what I wondered.
And so those don't. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, okay.
Just a, a comment, the state legislator set aside some money to, um, help drive homeownership for, uh, new construction, so.
Yeah.
You're aware of this.
Yeah, heard it, it was on the radio.
But they're, they're giving, uh, uh, home buyers twenty thousand dollars on new construction townhomes under four fifty. And that just took effect, it's supposed to take effect at the beginning of July and there's been a little bit of delay, but I think it's finally starting to roll out. But I was searching for some clients that actually, I'm trying to help them get into that, to use that program, and you never know how much these, how much inventories these builders have, have out there, because they don't list every single unit on the MLS, but it, it, there's not a lot of supply out there under four fifty thousand dollars for a townhome, brand new construction.
Yeah.
In the wa, I'd say in the Wasatch.
In the Wasatch.
Twilla actually has a really nice D.R. Horton development with a major townhome development that's very affordable, bang for your buck, it's just like two thousand square feet for about.
Does it gotta be applied for the way you understand it, Jared, bef, uh, before the unit started?
No.
It, it can be something existing, but has never, a buyer hasn't bought it yet.
So, a lot of builders, D.R. Horton's building some on spec, they usually do that.
Yeah.
And so these ones will be done, uh, in September, these ones in Twilla, and it was perfect for my buyers. I'm just mentioning that, one, to let you guys know that as you talk to people, but two,
Yeah.
The, the, the point is, is I don't think there's enough supply of townhomes under four fifty to, to really make a big impact, and I don't know how much the total, um, dollar amount was legislators set aside for that. But, um, it's just kind of interesting that they didn't, they didn't quite go far enough, and I, I don't, I don't.
Well, that, I talked to a couple of appraisers today, and they, it, uh, they, uh, they're just, everybody's kinda dumbfounded, and it's because of the supply.
It's a supply issue.
That, uh, you know, that, that the market hasn't softened more than everybody expected it would.
Yeah.
And it's because the supply's not there.
So are you still getting, are they still getting multiple offers, or? Yeah, occasionally. But it's, su- supply is the constraint, and that's the only thing that's keeping this market in check, because theoretically, it should be.
Builders, builders, because of the interest rates are so high, builders don't wanna build.
They're pulling back, yeah.
And we were already shortfall in the market every year for the last four years for supply.
We definitely have a undersupply.
As far as short, shortage of doors.
It almost makes you wonder if, on this whole moderate income housing, if they restructured how they determine moderate income housing. If they determine, if they, if they defer, if they redefined it based on your city, moderate income housing for your city, then you're looking at your income, not.
And that's interesting.
Then it's not, you're not looking at the super low, that would say Linden's moderate income housing would be four fifty-five, we might be able to find something for that, you know?
I think they, the way they approached that though was they wanna say that anybody in the county should have the ability to live in your community. You know, you're not keeping somebody out of your community because of a income level or something like that, so.
Well, yeah, Linden made the front page of the Daily Herald with their, um, getting rid of the police and fire impact fees.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
The Provo, Provo Parade made national news.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure it did.
It did, made, made national news, so, so how, how great it was.
It was.
The Freedom Festival is a typical deal.
Okay, Mike, I don't know what else you have.
Uh, and I can't remember, sorry, if I said that the general plan also passed last week by the city council, so that was great, that was a lot of work by this group and our general plan committee and the city council, so um, we have a few edits left to do on that, but, uh, we should have a final product in the next couple of weeks and have that checked off our list.
Well, that was a huge, huge thing for you and Mary and a lot of other people, so that's great.
Any seven hundred north movement, or is that, that stale as well?
Yes.
Now, I know the city, once, once everything died and went stale and Ivory pulled back, the city was talking about maybe going back after that deep lot. Did that ever go back to Ivory and?
We, we've, we've been in the process of, of discussing it with them.
And your bank doesn't wanna build on, in front of Songbird Cove or whatever?
Yeah, I don't know, we, we have a meeting with them tomorrow, we have a meeting with them on Thursday.
Oh, you do?
Not with the bank, with a real estate agent.
Oh, okay.
One, just a quick question, right, we don't have a meeting now till the end of August.
That's right.
And last year, we were asked to be in the parade to help with the flag, any, any commitments for our end?
No, we're gonna do that this year, huh?
I have not heard, so let me reach out to Heath tomorrow and, and see if.
That's pretty fun, we did that.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did it last year, so.
No one was more excited than Candy.
I guess more notice would be helpful, if we plan our time, so.
Uh, the parade is not on my radar, so, so thanks for bringing it up, so.
Just if there's something that we're.
Okay.
I don't know of any other commitments we have for Linden Days, but if there's something we're supposed to be at, but it's not.
What, what is the date for our next meeting?
Twenty-second, I believe, of eight, of August.
Okay.
Oh. I will not be, I'll be out of town, not next month.
So, we don't have any meetings till then, huh?
Yeah, we just meet once in July and once in August.
We just had, I've got a lot of things coming up.
Yeah, not, not a whole lot, we've got a few ordinance amendments, we'll see if those are ready or not. Um, I know there, we will have one, the developer, or sorry, the property owner on the north side of seven hundred north has made an application that he wants to petition the planning commission, city council to allow residential as a permitted use in our Linden Village Zone.
Throwing it up against the wall.
Mixed use already, don't we?
Oh, we only allow commercial down there.
We've been taking, we've been taking interest on people wanting to put like brownstone.
We've had some concept plans, people have applied with, with a, they pay their hundred and fifty dollar concept and come and talk to the planning commission and council. But the zoning currently doesn't allow that, and so.
It's my impression that even the council's softening on that, right, for more of a mixed use, am I correct in that, or?
I, I think they have, their intent is still that it be a commercial down there, and that, you know, if, once they know if there's some commercial and what commercial it is, then they would allow some residential to go in with that to help support the commercial.
I think it'll be interesting, 'cause just like the property where Songbird Cove is, once you let residential goes in, you know, even though that was supposed to be commercial driven, we still don't have a commercial property there, so I, I, I think that's gonna be an interesting discussion.
Yeah, I think that's the market, I mean, that's the market. Yeah, I'm okay with have allowing residential there, 'cause I think you need to have the rooftops to justify it. But then I think we really sort of got stunned on this one with them, I mean, we were supposed to have a certain percentage of the commercial already started before they did the back half.
You got a lot of rooftops in Pleasant Grove.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of rooftops in Pleasant Grove.
They, Pleasant Grove City just, uh, signed a development agreement, or approved a development agreement last week to allow eleven hundred and fifty residential units, um, on that area next to the freeway.
And those are the higher density units, aren't they?
Where would that be?
I'll pull up a map here.
Part of the St. John's stuff?
Uh-huh.
I, I read that.
'Cause I know they announced the conventions, you know, all that big hoopla with.
They're just going after tax dollars, what they're doing with St. John's.
We just need to be patient, it's working its way.
So this develop, this vacant property here next to the freeway, so this, this quadrant right here.
Oh, right there?
Would be eleven hundred and fifty, they're calling them luxury apartments.
So it's not affordable housing or anything, is it?
But that's rooftops for.
Yeah, it, it should help seven hundred north.
Yeah, it's rooftops for seven hundred north. Yeah, let them, let them.
Let them have it.
That's where the light is going in too, right, on that road.
Yes.
Two thousand, yeah, we're there.
How many acres is that?
I don't know.
I wondered, for eleven hundred and fifty, what, what the acreage was.
That's gonna spur, that's gonna spur discussion on the off-ramp. I was gonna say, that really adds some serious stress to that already busy intersection, interchange.
Already, it would just, should've just done it when they did it, but they're, it's all under construction right now to squeeze another lane in over there.
What that's gonna do is cause everybody coming this direction to get off the, for sure, route's gonna be through that traffic circle. That traffic circle's gonna be the back door in, which I don't know if that traffic circle was ever designed for, designed more for commercial than it was residential.
That is pretty, that seems pretty high density, I don't know what the size of that lot is, but that does.
Well, that's what I, that's what I wondered, what the acreage is.
It's probably over thirty units to the acre, for sure.
That's, uh, significant.
Yeah, the church property sitting there's a gold mine.
Thirty-six, forty-six.
That was sitting there, right, doing those plows.
It's about this section, right? Let's see, this area to about right here and over is about eleven point nine acres, so from this line to the east is eleven point nine, the rest of this is thirty-five point three seven acres, so total of about forty-seven acres over there.
Oh, it's, just show I have a hundred units to the acre, Sharon.
Yeah, we're probably gonna, yeah, good thing the traffic signal's gone, 'cause we'll probably hear.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, that's, now that's ser, you can really define that as high density.
How many is it?
No, if it's forty-seven acres.
But they, I mean, but they, it's, but it's just not.
No, the parcel they're sitting on though, he said it was eleven.
And I don't know how much.
You got eleven hundred units on eleven acres.
That's a hundred units per acre?
You said, what'd you say about the additional acreage?
I, I don't know what the acreage is, I, all I said was.
You're guessing it.
I said, all I said is there's a property line right here, this section is almost twelve acres, this is thirty-five. And so I, I don't know where, how much the multifamily encompasses. But they also have a bunch of office, a bunch of retail, they have an entertainment use that's shown on their site plan, and so.
That will also drive more discussion and more desire for the Anderson Boulevard intersection as well. 'Cause once that, 'cause that'll basically fill up the two thousand west corridor with traffic. So, so people from Anderson won't be going out that way anymore.
I, I tell you, I was over at, um, I went over to, over in Vineyard, over to the Maverick, and I tried to pull out onto the road that goes into the apartment, pull out, in the apartment, middle of the day, absolute red lock for no apparent reason, just other than people, it was just the density.
Yeah.
You know, it was really dense, it's like, wow.
But that, that should be really interesting to developers on seven hundred north, because
Yeah.
that's gonna, that's a lot of people to have.
That gives the rooftops.
It gives the rooftops, and we didn't have to.
And realtors are gonna love it, 'cause that's as close to Linden as you're gonna get without being in Linden, and there's not a lot available in Linden.
Well, unless we have anything else, um, are we ready to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
Second?
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hey, it's unanimous. Forty, forty-five minutes, you guys.